Welcome you, Commissioner. The Sheriff's County is not able to be here today, so I want to take this place today. Pete, I'm not sure if you heard anything about Pete. He's not going to be here. Okay, he's also not going to be here. Stand up for open prayer.
Dear us Lord, remind us that we are all sinners and fall short. Here our thanksgiving for the many blessings that you bestow on us, including the beneficial rains of the past few months. Here our wants and needs and decide what we sincerely need and grant it to us. These things we ask in the name of your son and our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any citizens in the area? What item was that, thirteen? Who was that? Item number six, discuss, accept a hundred dollar donation from George and Joe Iders to the sheriff's department to be used to start a children's teddy bear fund, but to be used as the discretion of the sheriff.
Good morning, Harrell. I just wanted to bring this to the attention usually when we receive donations from various organizations or citizens of Carnes County. We usually bring this to Commissioner's Court's attention.
Motion made to accept it.
Second.
Let's say to the all payers, say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed? Item number seven, discuss, accept the sixty-two hundred dollars donation from Conical Phillips and the sheriff's department to be used as a provision of equipment.
Sheriff, that's the same thing, Commissioner. We received a donation from Conical Phillips a couple of weeks ago and also want everybody to be all efficient and we will be using the donation thirty percent to use for the sheriff's department.
Okay.
I would move that we graciously accept their donation.
Great. It's been made in second, all payers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number eight, discuss, accept that on May eighth, two thousand fifteen, Carnes County EMS was awarded a grant to Conical Phillips in the amount of fifteen thousand to be used at the EMS administrator's discretion for equipment to enhance the Carnes County EMS system level of care.
He was just driving up.
It's been made in second, all payers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss, accept a hundred dollar donation from George and Joe Iders to Carnes County EMS Department donation to be used as the discretion of the Carnes County EMS administrator's discretion. Then again.
Second, the motion, big seconds.
It's been made in second, all payers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Thank y'all very much for all the donations. Item number ten, a resolution for ACOG recognizing May two thousand fifteen as Older Americans Month in Carnes County, presented by Mrs. Rhoades Ryan, over in the Alamo Area Agency on Aging.
And also other commissioners, we appreciate you taking a look at our resolution today and you request approval. It is a month, the May is the month for older Americans. We're very excited this year because this is also the fiftieth anniversary for the Older Americans Act. And the Older Americans Act was put into place in nineteen sixty-five by Lyndon B. Johnson and he gave benefits to all of our seniors. And so we do have those benefits at the Alamo Area Council of Governments. You just go online, ACOG dot com, or you can call us and inquire as to which benefits you're eligible for. So we have a lot of different programs. We also have a veteran program for free rides for veterans. And so we welcome all of the callers to call us and see what benefits they have for their community. And we really appreciate that. Our resolution can either be read by yourself or by me.
You can read the resolution.
All right, thank you. And then we ask for your approval. And the resolution is recognizing May as Older Americans Month where Carnes County and the Alamo Area Agency on Aging represent citizens age sixty or older, make their home, and the citizens of today and tomorrow promise to be among the most active and engaged older adult population in the nation's history. And that's due to all of the enhancements that we have to help people as they age gracefully. Whereas Carnes County recognizes May as the official month in which we pay tribute to the contributions of our nation's older Americans, and whereas the number of baby boomers reaching traditional retirement age continues to increase, it is the responsibility of the ACOG region and the U.S. communities to work together to prepare for the changing older American adult populations by modernizing our systems of care and provide consumers with more control over their lives. And whereas Carnes County supports efforts to provide individualized services and support systems to maintain the dignity, independence, and self-determination of older Americans as they age, improving their quality of life and increasing their opportunities to remain active and engage in their community life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Carnes Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim May two thousand fifteen to the Older Americans Month. Carnes County encourages every resident of Carnes County to get into the act and be engaged, active, and involved in their community and to honor and embrace older adults in gratitude for their meaningful contributions that are made not only to Carnes County, but to the United States of America. We also commend all of our community partners and the staff and volunteers of Carnes County for their outstanding dedication and commitment to our older Americans. Their hard work does make a difference to those whose lives they touch across Carnes County. We're requesting passage and approval on this twenty-ninth day of May.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you could give us just a brief overview of some of the programs. You don't have to go into detail.
Yes, I'd be, oh, I'm so glad you asked that. Yes, we have benefit counseling to entitle you to the various benefits for older Americans. We have care coordination. So we coordinate with other partners to make sure that you get all the services that you are entitled to. We also have an ombudsman program. And with the ombudsman program, we go to nursing homes and assisted living facilities and we ensure that the residents that are there are getting the quality of care that they deserve. We also have nutrition programs offered at senior centers throughout the various counties that we operate in thirteen counties in the area. And that would be another one. And then transportation services. We also have Medicare and Medicaid benefits. And typically, the enrollment is in the fall, but we have educational classes on that to teach people about what their benefits are and what they're entitled to. And then we also have rested care for those people who need a break. Occasionally caregivers are taking care of their parents that are older, maybe their grandparents, and they get an occasional break. So we have those services as well.
If we have some of these, I would hope that our newspaper editor might be willing to put some of them in there so the population in general is aware of the things that are available.
Well, that would be wonderful. In fact, I'll give him my part. If you could just email me, I'll send him some flyers that we have, not only to help our veterans of our transportation, but all of the older Americans with the benefits that they're entitled to. Thank you so much. I appreciate you, hopefully you'll pass this resolution.
I would move that we would pass the resolution as presented.
It's been made in second, all payers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Motion passes. Resolution passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have a resolution to sign. I was looking for, but I couldn't. Ma'am? Can you see it up here? I know she needed a copy too. Moving along to item number, we have discussed disapproval on signing proclamation recognizing communities for Carnes Alliance as an organization working for the betterment of Carnes County.
It was a patch for a group that had formed together with UTSA San Antonio. UTSA had a grant that they went out to the communities of the Edenburg and tried to create a group that would help create some type of program to sustain economic development with the counties that are affected by the Edenburg. And UTSA, we were one of the last counties that came in. They came in, they're on, they had a grant and it didn't cost anybody here the county. Their goal was to bring everyone in the county that wanted to participate in the program, regardless of what city you lived in, what part of the county you lived in. It was going to be a community group effort to sustain the growth that we had. And they led us through a process and one of the processes was we had a credit charter. And in the charter after that, we did the proclamation sign. So I tried to go out and be recognized and be a part of the county and be able to get some grants. I guess Jimmy is the one that I wanted to do to the lawyer and the city council of Carnes City. And I'm going to explain the whole process.
Good morning. How y'all doing this morning?
Fine, sir.
What we have here is the Communities of Carnes Alliance. The Communities of Carnes Allowance is a new organization that was formed as a result of a series of workshops facilitated by the UTSA People for Share Communities Development Program, as Shelby had mentioned. That took place between October two thousand fourteen and February two thousand fifteen. Workshop participants learned how to identify, fund, and complete projects aimed at improving the quality of life for everyone who lives and works in Carnes County, Texas. The central question at the heart of all the discussions and training sessions in these meetings was, how do you want Carnes County to look in five years? How do you want it to look in ten years from now? And twenty years from now? Then the question became, what can we do together to make the vision a reality? Carnes County Communities of Carnes County Alliance has monthly meetings and through these meetings, the group has identified several projects that are believed to could be greatly beneficial to the people of Carnes County, one of which is a possible hike and bike trail connecting the cities of Carnes City and Kennedy along the abandoned Breaux Road roadway, which would provide a self-safed alternative to highways and kind of roads for people to walk, dog, ride, bicycle, rollerblade, etc. CKA is also trying to work with the Carnes County Economic and Development Corporation to enhance community development in Carnes County. Other projects that have been discussed include a possible sports park to enhance recreational activities all of Carnes County people could use, especially the youth of Carnes County. Other projects, ideas discussed include a new informational website, online portal for information of all kinds related to Carnes County, a new rest stop area in Panama Maria, improved highway signage aimed at drawing attention to Carnes County as a great place to live or as a tourist destination. Improvements to local parks and construction of a new community county park along the banks of the San Antonio River. The group's charter was approved at the CKA meeting in May and its next step is to introduce itself to all the communities and organizations and the people of Carnes County. The proclamation the CKA has respectfully submitted for your consideration will be very helpful in these efforts. We appreciate your placement on the agenda for your consideration. CKA hopes to one day be an organization that can act as a glue that helps bond all different Carnes County entities, organizations, and individuals together as one. CKA hopes to enhance communication between all of these different folks who are often working towards similar goals but may lack the resources to get many of these dream projects accomplished. Many hands make light work and CKA wants to add more hands on the ongoing and potential future efforts to make Carnes County a better place to live, learn, work, and have fun together as one happy, peaceful, and prosperous community. Right now, CKA is asking me to sign this proclamation recognizing CKA as an organization. This will be very helpful to the group as it continues to work towards a successful completion of projects built that all people of Carnes County. So without respect, I think we have a proclamation before you.
I can pull it up for you. I emailed it to you yesterday even.
They're all going to attempt to achieve Level One C three status.
Level one, one C, yes. Right. To be able to receive contributions and grants and stuff. Those that are in the audience that currently belong to the CKA, I'd like them to please stand. And these are the people within it, all of Carnes County, all the way from Paul City, Rodney, and Kennedy and Carnes City, all points in between. And a lot of people that work in those groups and those workshops. We thank you very much. I want to thank you good for the proclamation.
I just sent Jimmy. I can't find him. He didn't get through.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Jimmy, y'all looking for a proclamation?
Yes. We're getting one printed up.
Item number twelve, discuss, approve, disapprove to consider a possible act of hiring and laggity panic and buffer to conduct a minimum interest title opinion of all property owned by Carnes County. Is that by Vincent Butler?
Good morning. Commissioner Rosales, I've got some packets I'd like to share with commissioners a little bit. Thank you, sir. If the commissioners will indulge me, I'll give a brief recitation of the history of this project up to this point. Late last year, early two thousand fifteen, county attorney Herb Hancock engaged with, in some discussions with my firm regarding the mineral interests owned by Carnes County. My first question to Herb was, what do y'all own? And his answer to that was, we have no idea. I then spoke to the county judge at the time, who I'm pretty familiar with. His name is Richard Butler. And I asked him the same question and he said, we literally got no idea. And so Herb, excuse me, county attorney Hancock approached me again about the matter and asked, what is it that our firm, especially our satellite firm located here in Carnes City who primarily does oil and gas work, what can we do for the county on this issue? So, well, you know, the first thing that's necessary is we have to determine, you know, what mineral interest does the county own before we can then begin to determine whether or not the county's receiving the correct amount of money from the leases, whether or not the mineral interest is correctly determined by those oil and gas companies that do hold leases. Basically, just a thorough title opinion and lease audit. Attorney Hancock thought that that was a good idea and on February eleventh, he executed the engagement letter that's attached to your packet. He then also tendered to me what the county did know about its mineral interest. And that's the second item, second exhibit, I guess, to the packet I gave you. And this collection of division orders, royalty checks, and memorandums of oil and gas leases represents the universe of knowledge that the county has as to the mineral interest that it owns. When you tagulate all of the acreage set out on the lease memorandums that are attached to this packet, it comes out to twenty-six point five acres. Twenty-six point five mineral acres. Yes, sir.
You are aware that these, the Texas Legislature passed a bill whereby all the mineral interests under the county road system of Carnes County now reverts back to the county, and that passed.
Yes.
So that would fall under the purview of your search.
Yeah, I'll be getting to that, sir, but yes, that does include my search. And so as of today, the county only knows twenty-six mineral acres that it owns. We then submitted to Judge Long and county attorney Hancock a four-phase plan that I believe would be necessary in order to determine what minerals do we own, what leases are we subject to, are the oil and gas companies acting in compliance with those leases, and then have our mineral interest been correctly determined by either some oil and gas company or by a court. I'm not sure how familiar this esteemed body is with my litigation practice, but a lot of it revolves around mineral deed interpretation lawsuits. Mineral law can be a complicated issue and the interpretation of deeds can often be interpreted several different ways and it oftentimes takes litigation in order for a court to come to some sort of decision as to what a deed actually says with regards to who owns the minerals. So, you know, there is a possibility that a title opinion by an oil and gas company on some mineral interest that may or may not be owned by the county has incorrectly judged that the county might not own all or a portion of the minerals. That would be something that we would need to explore. And so the four phases that I set out in the letter, our phase one would be document gathering. We contracted with CW Lake and Associates to conduct a title search to find all of the deeds that the county has a mineral interest in, find all of the leases that the county would be subject to, and basically provide us run sheets and copies of all of the deeds, assignments, stipulation of interest that would in any way, shape, or form affect any mineral acreage owned by this county. That's obviously a huge project considering where we're starting from, which is basically square one. When I spoke and hired on CW Lake's office to conduct this search, I basically told them, you've got to start from the very beginning and just go out there and find every mineral acreage that you can. And this was based upon conversations that I had with attorney Hancock, county attorney Hancock, in which I asked him, is there any sort of size limit on the mineral acres that you want us to look for? You know, has it got to be over an acreage? It's got to be over five acres? And based upon my conversations with attorney Hancock, it was any acreage, you know, no matter how small, no matter how big. So I sent CW Lake's office out into the world to go find as much as they could. And on April twenty-third, we received a call from Judge Long and he requested that we meet with him immediately based upon some fee statements that had been submitted to him by my office and by KOW Lake's office. We were informed at the time that Judge Long did not remember approving this project, which came as, you know, obviously a surprise to Chris Lake and I. So we immediately put this matter on hold. We did not conduct any further work and we had submitted this to the county in order for the county commissioners to make a decision on whether or not this is a project that the county wants to go forward with. I believe that this is an incredibly important project for several reasons. First of all, on the preliminary work that CW Lake's office has done just to this point, they have already discovered a hundred and forty-two fee tracks that we've got a mineral interest in. They've also discovered a hundred and sixty-one fee roadway tracks like Mr. Yarder has described. Of those hundred and forty-two fee tracks that we've got an interest in, so far ninety-nine have been, we've been able to determine the acreage on ninety-nine of those, which comes to eighty-six acreage. If you remember, when we started here, we only knew of twenty-six acreage. In addition, we found of the hundred and sixty-one road tracks that we've got an interest in, fifty-three of those road tracks have an acreage of a hundred and fifty-four mineral acreage, leaving, you know, a hundred and eight road tracks that still need to be determined as to their acreage. So there's a lot of acreage out there that this county just doesn't know about. And as this county knows full well, most of Carnes County is not only leased, it's producing. So there's money out there that's being held somewhere by some company that we've got no idea about and that we're not going to have an idea about unless we commit the time, energy, and effort into this project to be able to determine what is it that we own? Are we being paid fairly? And, you know, has our ownership been correctly determined? And that is the project that my office, in association with CW Lake's office, is requesting this county allow us to do. Now, KOW Lake's office has been kind enough to provide what they believe would be a reasonable estimate as to the totality of their work and it comes very close to half a million dollars. And I would suspect that the efforts by my, my firm would probably be several hundred thousand as well. But if you look at it, you know, as of now, we've already discovered well over two hundred mineral acres that the county doesn't know about. If those mineral acres are producing, if they're subject to good leases, there's a potential that that money could be recruited just by the amount of money that's being held in suspense right now. Now certainly, I'm not promising that because at this point, we just don't have a base of knowledge that would enable us to give the county any certainty as to what would be coming back to the county at the end of this. But the essential element of this is that the county owes a fiduciary duty to its citizens to know what the county owns. And, you know, even if the county doesn't receive one cent on the back end of our work, the county would be able to look at every citizen in this eye and say, yes, we know exactly what we own. We know exactly what the leases that we have are subject to and we can call on Leland and Banack or any other firm that we choose at any time to enforce our rights and privileges under any oil and gas lease that we're subject to. And if you don't know what you own, then you're, there's no way that you can make any claims on your behalf. And so, you know, it's very possible, like I said, that the county is missing out on a huge windfall of money that could be going to help the citizens of this county. And at this time, I'll be free to answer any questions from the commissioners or if you would like to go on and answer any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
When you say mineral acres, are those your net mineral acres? Or are these total?
Well, we don't know the ownership in each acre, acre at this point because right now, all we've done is identify mineral ownership in it. We've not done a full title search because we were told to stop on April twenty-third. What we have done is identify acres in which we do have a potential interest in. What that interest is at this point, I'd be unable to tell the commissioners.
Ready?
What about the lands or the properties that were, shall we say, sold at sheriff's auctions in the last five or six years or by the county? Stripping of their mineral acres before they sold them? How are y'all going to address that?
We need to see what the documents say. You know, without a document in front of me, it's impossible to tell you, you know, basically on a hypothetical, what the effect of any sort of sheriff sale or anything would say. You know, and when you're conducting a title search, the language in the deed, or title opinion, excuse me, the language in the deed or the stipulation of the assignment, whatever conveyance document you have, is paramount to determining. is paramount to determining what interest is either reserved or conveyed. So, it's a good question. I appreciate it. And I apologize, I'm not able to give you a more definitive answer. But every conveyance document's different.
I understand.
And so, you know, without a particular document in front of me, I can't tell you what the effect of any sort of document is.
Yeah, I wasn't asking about the effect of a particular document. I was just asking in general what your, how y'all would approach that issue because the county did reserve mineral acres supposedly under all the sheriff sales for tax purposes.
If we did, and the document's clearly, you know, under the Texas case law, a reservation of minerals has to be done by clear and specific language. If the language in any sheriff's deed or any prior document clearly and specifically reserves the minerals in the county, the county owns those minerals.
Was, has there been any formal commissioners' court action on giving this started? I see the letter from Mr. Hancock, and I'm not saying it was wrong or anything else, but has there been anything other than, what I'm gathering is Mr. Hancock individually sent this letter of engagement that there was no formal court action. I've only been here since the first of the year, but I'm pretty sure that we've not looked at this before.
The commissioners', the commissioners' court is not their decision.
David, I would like to express in regards to the mineral interests and the royalties underneath the county roads, this is something that's been established by the General Land Office years ago. In fact, I'm in possession right now of a map that, from the General Land Office, that tells us what deeded acres underneath the roads that the county has the right to. It's not quite a lot. It's very minstrel, if you will. And when you look at the recent legislation that went through on SB 951 and HB 2521, it does not start until September of 2015. That being said-
Seventeen.
Well, 2017 will be even worse. That being said, your oil has gone from $100 a barrel to $50 a barrel. Fowler had petitioned for this to be retroactive and to start in 2010, and the legislation did not vote on that. According to Siri Ayr's office, they will not make it retroactive. The leasing on it has already been said and done. We have no hope of getting any type of lease money on any of the deeded acres underneath the roads. So, any of the mineral interests that we get on the very few roads that are deeded to the county, and there is a map, Fowler has it. He forwarded it to me. It is in the General Land Office. It was determined years ago. It's a said and done deal, and you won't be expecting, I don't think, a whole lot of money from it. So, you need to take that into consideration when they're saying that, you know, they're going to explore more findings of, you know, mineral interest under the roads. The General Land Office has that in record, and it won't be changing.
My response to that would be, I would agree wholeheartedly that any bonus money that's exchanged in considerations with signing an oil and gas lease is long gone. But where the county would reach, where the county would achieve some considerable money or possibly would be not so much on the wells that are currently producing, but, you know, I think, I think we're, I'm reminded of an old oil and gas lawyer's saying, when it comes to oil and gas prices, he says, "It's reverse gravity. What goes down must go up." And so, you know, what we'd be looking for is if the prices come back up, which they are steadily doing, and companies continue to drill out units, and new wells come on in 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, and into the future, those initial production numbers that come from oil and gas wells in Eagle Ford Shell are the biggest numbers. And so, if a ownership can be established under those roads prior to 2017, any new wells that come online after 2017, county would reap a pretty good reward off of them.
Just a little note, to date, this fiscal year will receive over $160,000 royalties in what properties we have identified.
I think that, I think the project probably has some viability. And with no particular ill feelings toward either the law firm or the people that are doing the research on this, my issue would be the same thing. And I know we've been told we can negotiate these things, but I need to do anything without corresponding proposal. It's like going to one car dealership and saying, "We'll negotiate here." I just don't like the idea of taking the first proposal that comes down the queue as being a good one. Now, the project, I think, is a great one, and your timeline and your money situation may be the best out there, but I am very uncomfortable with doing something without having some basis, some comparison to the thing. I think it's very poor business to say, "Well, we need to do this, so we'll do a bargain. This is our price."
How much, heard, heard here?
Yes.
How much is the county out of, I mean, somebody's done some work on this, ready?
I'm not sure. It shall be about how much it would have done. Let me give you just a little history that Clinton, and add to his stuff. Judge Long, in January, when he came into office, started getting these division orders, started getting leases, and just refused to sign. He said, "We just, you know, we're not going to do anything because I have no idea what I'm doing." And I, I said, "Judge, I can't tell you because there is so much out there I can't do." So, Judge Long asked me to go and talk to somebody. So, I talked to Clinton and his law firm with the understanding of getting them to look at what we had based on what Judge Long told me to do. We couldn't get any leases signed. Judge Long just felt very uncomfortable doing that. So, we were at a standstill at that time. So, we had to do something. Judge Long is just not comfortable doing anything in the oil and gas field, in my opinion, unless he knows what he's doing. And I think that's a good attitude to take. And money-wise, I don't know that I have the ability to tell you guys how much money needs to be spent and how it should be done. I don't know if there's another firm here. I went to a local firm and not an outside firm because we've had some criticism about going outside. And I just went to this firm and talked to them because they specialize in this field. They're one of the best ones. And I signed the letter based upon, it's a letter I signed with Jeff Chapman. It's a fee schedule as to what the fee will be if they work for us at a certain amount. And that's basically what the firm letter that I signed. Now, the agreement that he's talking about is the agreement that Judge Long looked at and did not sign because he wanted the commissioners' court to understand. So, it has to do with the research and the totality of the circumstances. So, I, you know, it's an expensive item, but I really don't have a educated guess as to how much mineral interest we have. And I could not tell you today whether we're getting anything close to what we should be getting. I can tell you the first year that I was here, if something came into the office, the county judge decided. Division orders, I talked to them about it, but my limited knowledge of the documents that I had were all I had, and there was no regular place. Luanne knew what was coming in because we carried the checks to her. And I didn't have, I couldn't tell you the money that was attached to a lease or the money that was attached or something. We just didn't have that and don't have that to do with it at this time. So, that's where we are. And I expect it to be expensive. I don't know that I, if you're dealing with oil and gas, for some reason, the dollars go up, and that's, and that's, I'm not in that part with the, the need for the project and the need for it to be done correctly was very important to me, and I, because Judge Long indicated that that's what he wanted me to do, and I did that based upon his instruction. In the past, I've signed these engagement letters in that way. Basically, I don't ever recall one that were signed without talking to the county judge in most cases.
I heard. Do you have any idea what the judge is feeling on this particular contractual obligation is? Is this something he wants?
I can't tell you what Judge Long's. I know that Judge Long met with Clinton, you know, one time I was not at the meeting. I know that Judge Long, I talked to him about, when I got a bill from them, I carried it to Judge Long, and I know that I talked to him about those bills. Most of the time, I signed the bills. I don't recall seeing the one bill that I signed. I don't know if Judge Long signed off on the bill yet. But I do know that, of course, everything that I've done, I've tried to talk to Judge Long and give some direction. And I think the Clinton there were doing basically the same thing.
Please understand, I have no question about the competency of either the law firm or Kow Lake's organization. Like I said, I'm just, I'm just always not happy with the sole provider without anything else. But my concern is, is we all know Judge Long is an extremely strong personality. And even if the three of us decide, "Let's go ahead," and he says, "I ain't going to," you know, we-
I think you assess the situation appropriately.
My approach would be, this is something that needs to be tackled until the judge is here, because if he ain't happy, it don't matter what we do.
I think you hit it square on the head.
I would move that we would table this till further action until such time as Judge Long can be present and can be presented again.
You want to table it, you just want to take no actions?
Well, whatever is appropriate, I figured if you table it, it opens the door, but, you know.
If they're going to table it, it just leaves it open, so, yeah. Either way. I'd like to have a full court here to see that, well, you know, so it's a big one. But I agree with the point that we need to know exactly what we own.
And I don't have a question about that. I mean, that's my concern as net as the bros and the Lakers because I would be willing to bet at least a couple of calls again and I'll go that our net out of these is going to be substantially less than the bros, that they're too small or almost perhaps miniscule percentages. But as the young man said, the need though is there. Anyway, with that, I'll shut up.
I just want to remind you that under Local Government Code 262.024, you have discretion to not have throughout local councils for federal services.
I know that's the case, but we also have the opportunity to do so if we want to and does not exclude us from doing it just as we have.
Being we've mentioned the roads, well, I'll go, Clinton, you can ask, answer a question for me. I got the email from Siri Ayr's office that the royalty thing is going to be probably amended or not. The governor would sign it for 2017, but Luanne and I conversing back and forth. She made something when I come. I'm wondering about that is that she says also that the county will be responsible for property taxes associated with oil and gas royalties, not only to the county, but to the watershed, school districts, hospital districts, et cetera. And so, she says here, we currently pay taxes on other royalty investments the county owns. So, would that be, how will that affect the county?
That's an issue we've not looked into. Certainly, you know, we've done some category work, we've been doing what we want to happen to. At this time, that's not an issue that's a great problem.
Yeah, I just don't make-
Another question I directed toward Shelby Schlapp, the one is, since we are responsible for property taxes on our royalty interests now, does the state have to pay property taxes since they're receiving the royalty interest?
I'd be more comfortable with my municipal attorney, Paul Fletcher, was here with me to answer such questions. Yeah, I'm a very simple oil and gas attorney. So, you know, I'd, 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 I'd stick this into that. But certainly, you know, these types of questions are good questions, and certainly there's people at my firm who are very qualified to answer them. And any questions that you'd like me to write in, I'd be happy to answer.
I said, I'm ready.
Somebody got a second, did he?
Okay, it's been tabled until we have a full court for the decision, and I agree with it because it's kind of higher than, I thought it was going to come out in the amount. What did you say they was going to be, one half a million?
They estimated 150.
150, so we all a couple of hundred dollars?
You know, it's very difficult to ascertain this one.
I understand.
But I think that's probably acceptable.
Yes, sir. Yeah, with those, with those numbers being thrown around, I would like a, and if there's something like this, I would like a full court.
Would we like to do it as an open court here? Or do you want to just workshop amongst commissioners and directors?
Unless it's a contractual matter or something, I think it would have to be an open court situation. It could be a-
I would prefer it, and courts or the citizens can hear what we're talking about, and, you know, they can, they can-
Sure.
They can opinion if they want.
Sure, that's fine.
Unless the judge wants it some other way, then we're doing nothing.
Okay. Would it be possible just to be able to ensure that we can get a decision as quickly as possible? I'd be more than happy to represent this issue for the court to begin. Can we schedule a time, though, that we can make sure that all five will be available so that I can make sure that I can discuss it with the full court in private? And then, if we need to come back in front of the full court-
So, you're having an executive session?
An executive session if possible. That way, I can make sure that all five are present, and then we can submit it to another court here. And that way, if one or more of the members of the court like today are able to make it.
And I'm not sure if we can go into the executive session of this matter, but we can, go ahead.
I don't think that it qualifies to be held in the technical session.
Well, we didn't want to do that anyway.
I mean, talking about, talking about almost resources of the economy and others of funding public monies, and it does not qualify for executive session.
I, I understand. I'm comfortable in the public, I always have, I don't have a problem. I'm comfortable in the public, I always have, I don't have a problem with it.
I'm fine with it. Either way, I just want to make sure to be an opportunity to qualify to present that session, so that the situation might be that different.
Sure. But I'm, I'm more in the right sort of... Well, okay, if they're tabled and seconded, then we'll make a decision. I'll be more asking. The mayors, they all, everybody? Any opposed, none? Sorry, go ahead.
There's a need also for us to meet next week late with the, with Jeff Chapman in reference to jail project.
Okay.
And I'll talk a little bit about that at that point, because we're in a critical stage right now, and things are going kind of south of ourselves.
Do you want to sell together?
We'll have to do them at different times.
You want to do them at different times?
But on the same day, but we'll have to do his one time.
I see what you did, Jeff, I understand, I see what you did.
It may be Thursday or Friday, but we'll check on Judge Long's schedule.
Okay. I would run myself a little more whenever it's just as long as it suits Jeff Long and the rest of the guys.
Yeah, it's fine. You want yours in the afternoon, in the morning, or?
I think Judge Long is here just in the morning, and I, unless Erica tells me differently, I believe that's what he told me, is that, is that correct? He's here in the mornings and has some kind of medical treatment in the afternoon, and he has to go to San Antonio in the afternoon, I think it's quite realistic.
The best days will be either Wednesday or Friday of next week. If I decide to do it Wednesday, then I'd be close to it this afternoon.
What do y'all want to do? Probably not pizza later or not.
I can get a, I can promise your, your, and your job to confirm that which day would be preferable.
Yeah, after this meeting, then we can, I'll get you two and see what I'm waiting on those days, and which day is better for me too, and then we can...
Can y'all look at Friday? It's about either day's Friday, I mean, Friday's Friday.
What is, what is the day on Friday?
Day five. Day five is Friday.
I would not be available Wednesday, I'll be in a position, but would be available Friday.
Friday, yes. Judge Long, Friday too? Judge Long, he's scheduled to pair on Friday?
Yes.
Mister Chapman is in trial in love, and he's starting, he's gonna start Monday, so I think he'll be through on Friday, and he's reading for the request. Mister Chapman needs to be at this, be in robust, we can address a big disissue, the issue of the jail, and another issue, legal issue, with Mr. Shaw. So we're trying to do all three of them if we can.
Right, he's good for me.
Erica, Friday's fine. If you want to just call Pete, you can see if he can be here. And we'll make it Friday, and then we'll let you know the time?
Very good.
It'll be in the morning for sure between nine and ten, something like that, more like about nine.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I appreciate the court and the public's time, thank you.
Okay, that motion passes. Item number twelve has been tabled. Item number, item number thirteen, discuss approve, disapprove on Saturday for the given resource position and possibly hires, or for this Orange County position, okay?
Exactly, I guess we're probably too much to go to the judge. We have, the county advertised for a human resources position. Judge, and we have time on ourselves to interview some people. I'm gonna have to the judge decide what we want to do, if we want to put the dish in bed, or what we want to do. That's why I put him on, but he's not here. I've talked to Guy about this, Guy has made comment that he has her, one person who's working in her office that could, that's been doing the county's payroll thing, and that person could also maybe distribute assigned HR duties. Then I heard judges made comment, well, he wants to have control of the HR. I'd rather have him be here to do this, I mean, to, to discuss, but the mad, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a budget issue for next year anyway. So I think we do could go this route, but I definitely think we need some type of HR working, somebody assigned to the county. Yesterday, I was, I was, I was in North Coast County yesterday, and talking with them, they're at the doctor's conference, and said that the IRS is gonna start coming down on all counties and stuff for auditing and doing other things with the HR work, they do not, they do not properly fund it, I mean, properly document it, they're gonna come after you. So I don't think we've been doing our, our, you know, things change all the time, so this is one of, one of the concerns that I have. Because I just knew that he just takes it off the table until the judge can come back and stuff. Maybe at that Friday meeting with the, we have a little meeting left.
Okay, since item number thirteen was put on here, Shelby Dugnick, he wants to go ahead and just take no action on item number thirteen, I don't know. Judge Kozak, did you have a comment on this one? I had your name written by it, so unless you want to wait until the next time we put it on, it's fine.
It's pretty much everything Shelby just said.
Okay, all right, thank you, Judge. Your honor?
I believe within the last budget, a human resources position was approved to sixty-seven thousand dollars.
I believe that was the CFO position, and the assistant to the CFO would be in charge of HR, and that position was budgeted at thirty-one thousand, three twenty-one thirty-five.
I think also in the original discussion, human resources is, is now a reprogramming hundreds of universities throughout the United States. And it's not something that you can give somebody a job and say, you're the human resources officer, go do it without the proper education and foundation and experience. I think it'd be an extreme, an extreme mistake by the Department of Commerce County to hire someone, as we unfortunately have now. It's not schools, hasn't got a, an education, and an degree in the, in the human resources arena. Because we're not gonna make any progress, and human resources today is a very complex issue. And if you go to any human resources office within any corporation or any municipal entity, you're gonna find that it's, it's not one person's shop, but it's not quite a few people working there simply because you can't stay out, one person cannot stay with all the federal and state regulations that are required, that we adhere to. As, take a look at our own human resources book, pamphlet, whatever you want to call it. I mean, why this county hasn't been sued for millions of dollars, I have no idea.
I certainly agree with Maurice on that. Excuse me. Education plus some experience would be absolutely necessary. I think probably we're going to have to do whatever is necessary to pay a sufficient amount. I think we have hired on the cheap before, and we've got exactly what we paid. So when it comes time for this one, and the CFO, and some of those, it was, I'm usually the one that pinches pennies, but in this instance, I think time has come to pay for quality individuals rather than just hiring someone, so.
The people that we interviewed, your honor, were people that currently work in the fifth, so they were...
Thirty-one thousand dollars?
Oh, no, it, it couldn't be thirty-one, but the ones that we, we interviewed were had, were very experienced, had many years of experience in HR work, and some had worked with the county, some had worked in, in the industry.
Why didn't you hire somebody?
The judge was waiting to make his decision.
Well...
But I mean, the people that we, we interviewed were all qualified.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, that's not what I'm chuckling about, what I'm, what I'm laughing about. I think what we need to do...
That's why I brought this to, to, to the table.
Mr. Yoder, do you have a comment? We have one that's coming on his own.
Yeah, well, it's a concern that I have, that goes to all of the issues where y'all strictly defer to the judge, all of the commissioners, there's five of y'all, and your votes count. So it seems the same.
Twenty percent of the vote. But the new administration, that's my thing right there.
However, the statute, clearly statute's clear that when the commissioner's court is in session, even though we give him the honor of addressing him as a judge, he is essentially a tiebreaker on a commissioner's vote. And because the judge might have a disposition, or, you know, he's been referred to several times today, because the judging of here is absolutely not within the discretion of this court.
You're the judge.
You're the pro temp, today you are the judge.
I understand. You're presiding over them.
That's right, he is presiding by, by title, and by statute.
We can also get into such a situation, and I know most of you know Mr. Long for a long time, I certainly have, but if he makes his mind up, we can be court one, and he ain't gonna do it. I mean, you may have to go to court.
Doesn't matter.
I mean, if you're, if you're four to one, and four carry...
I understand that, but he says I won't sign it.
You don't need the signature.
You don't need the signature.
See, you authorize him to sign things, that's, that's why I always ask for your authorization.
Yeah, I agree.
You have to give him that authorization.
Excuse you, sir, I agree with Shelby, we're not here for discussion of the judge, and I don't want to beat him up when he's not here. So there's one with item number fourteen. Discuss approve, disapprove advertising and hire the maintenance director, ordered by Pete Yawler.
He gave me a statement, he wanted me to read. He said, "We received two applications for the maintenance supervisor. Judge Long, myself, and Pete interviewed these individuals. We determined that either one could fill the position, and after deciding that the beginning or minimum wage was appropriate, based on the salary survey, he called both and talked to them. One applicant declined as soon as he heard the wage offered, the other asked for time to discuss it with his wife, and after a few days later, he also declined the position. Therefore, he is requested to repost the position again, and he has told the community that it was a potential...
Okay, and what was it, around fifteen eighty-three or fifteen something?
Sixteen eighty-four.
Eight sixteen eighty-four, and it will be declined, eh?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no action on this one, basically?
We need to, we need to advertise, we can advertise.
Cause he wants that again, I'm sorry, I am so sorry.
I would think that we re-advertise a position as, it's not noted in item fourteen.
The mayors taking it on, okay, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion passes. Item number fifteen, discuss approve, disapprove on the volume, Commissioner Shelby getting to sign one three-day contracts with Texas Department of Corrections for use of their community squad workers, which comes to no cost in Orange County, Shelby?
We've been, we've been utilizing the, the TDC J D squad to work at the, at the food bank, that's all we've been using for, and they've been, we've received one contract with, with selling them, but it's just a saying that, hey, we're coming to work for you in the county, you know, you know, just, there's no money change of hands, nothing like that. But if to get this done and sign it, they want it done prior, or, because of the day they bring the con, they come to work, they want to sign that day, or, and I just want to know, I talked to the judge about it, and he said he's had a problem with it, but I want to make sure, I talked to the one, and I want to make sure the court knew whether it would be okay for the court to do it. They work at the food bank, being holding trucks, they cut the grass around that place, it's just like two days a month, next month it'll be three days. You know, three different days, like one every Monday, and that's all it is. And if they have a longer contract, it's supposed to do, like if you want to go in and get these guys to work on the side of the road, something like that, it would be a certain day contract, and we're gonna have to... Only believe that, other than signing.
We have some sort, because the county has some sort of a harmless agreement, in case something goes, hey, well...
Really difficult, they're fully responsible.
They have their own plate to change and stuff like that.
Yeah, and it falls on their liability, because I think we've gone through that before, and the county, their own, on this track.
They, they really do provide a big service to...
Shelby, I, I just want to thank you for doing that, for, for getting to help us come out to the food bank. They, they do a wonderful job, and, and we had no problems, and it's just, it's been a good service.
I would move that we approve, are using, excuse me, approve allowing Shelby to go ahead and sign the agreement with the TDC for the use of their community squad workers as stated in item number fifteen.
Motion to make, and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion passes. Item number sixteen, discuss approve, disapprove on allocating office space for TCEQ and possibly Texas Railroad Commission. Recommendation that Orange County allocated space in juvenile agglomeration building on Market Street, Shelby?
We discussed this in prior meetings. You know, we eventually wanted to help housing in the, in the canal building, if we ever do anything to that, but talking with, with Jared Allman and Megan Dickinson, there's not much, there's a lot of room in that building, and that, that illegal not probation thing that they're right now, and I've talked, and all the TCEQ, it means it's just a desk, there's a desk there, they don't need any phones, they have their own, you know, cell phones and their own computers, they just want a place to sit, have a place to work if they need to, and also be the place for the local citizens with any complaints for that TCEQ to go, they'd be here one, two days a week, just to, you know, I hope you the railroad commission will follow. As recent incidents that have happened, TCEQ's been having more of a presence than I can, and as even as of yesterday, they were in that pipeline, to either just spark that pipeline, and the well out on, on Highway seven, uh, seven eight two, so, I'm gonna make the most of it, go ahead and allow TCEQ to, to utilize that office space in the railroad commission, extend that to them. The industry has expressed that they would like to see them here as well.
Would that be, would that be in some of the front offices, or is that in the big room?
That, that big, big, that...
And every brick like partition walls, somewhere maybe?
It could be in the back.
Your...
This is a pet peeve of mine, I'll bring you up, because we're bringing this issue up again. We seem to go to extreme lengths to try to find office space for TCEQ and the railroad commission to state the lease, and whoever else comes that works in this county. One of the things I would like to see, and we just seem to keep going around this particular subject, is we have yet to address the issue of office space for our county commissioners. You guys are operating out of your cars or whatever, and if somebody wants to come and sit down and visit with you, you know, it's usually Dairy Queen or wherever, I think it's entirely inappropriate that we are making office space available to whoever before we have office space for our commissioners. Every other county elected official or, or employee has an office. And I think that it's important that you have an office also.
Thanks. I really approve the allocated construction, thank you, Mr.
Nice to hear that you listen to us.
Well...
It's just another one of those cans, we just keep kicking down that road because we just don't address the problem.
I understand your sentiment. One commissioner, one commissioner has an office, and it's...
He's not even supposed to be there by statute.
In the, in the...
That's correct.
Where?
Down there with Roden Bridge.
Yeah.
He's not with Roden Bridge.
I thought you were going to put him with Roden Bridge.
No, he's with the parking office.
Yeah, the Roden Bridge, our permitting office, the special projects, which is nine one one.
You need to check statute, I'm not sure that's...
Well, he's decided, he's decided to permit, this way it kind of works in and out of...
But I mean, I, I have office space there, and I'm certainly not knowledgeable in the term, in the totally legal aspect of whether I am or am not supposed to be there, I don't have a clue about that, but I, I agree with Mr. Yoder that perhaps we need to look at some of these other things. I have had questions about these two entities coming in. I talked to Shelby about it some length yesterday, since he had put it on here. My approach was, I don't particularly care for regulators at all. But if, if they don't cost anything, the day that it costs the county anything more to put them there, they need to eat to pay rent or move, he assured me that there would be no cost to the county, they would use what's there, so at this point, to get it out of the way, and I realize we have to address at some point commissioners having an office. Excuse me, but I think we may as well go ahead and do something and get, get them in there. But that having been said, like I say, the first minute there comes through a bill that I can see that they cost anything, from my standpoint, they're gone.
In, in the years of, in one of Mr. Yoder, in the years that I've been here, I do see where the need for office space for commissioners would be required at maybe one of these times, but a lot of times they call you for the road conditions, and it's better to, you go out there and you meet with a person on the road. A lot of times since I've been here, the fifteen years I've been here, we can use any meeting room that we need to use, and it's not specifically ours, but we can come into here, we can go into any empty meeting room and meet, I have been in the past, and I have my own office, I've been using it for six, fifteen, sixteen years now, which is my company office, and maybe it's not right to use it, but I use my ink, my paper, and I have my meetings in there and all that, so they have a place to meet with me, but maybe one of these days we can look into having maybe one room, so if we use it, and we can kind of figure out using it two hours here, two hours there, whatever we need, but we have had all, any empty meeting rooms, the commissioners are allowed to go and use those at any time of the day. If they're not occupied.
I've lived in several counties in this state, and I've visited a number of counties in this state, in parts of Comanche, Texas, walking the courthouse of Comanche, Texas, there's a commission, they've got an office, their office, they share one secretary, all four commissioners, Bear County, Duaneville County, I've worked in, in process. Everyone, everyone had an office. And you like, as you like to say, Shelby, you know, it's not something left, I'm certainly not as a quarter as a paper cut, but I will tell you this, when I come to visit you, I would like to walk up to your office and see that you have posted office hours at your office, and I would have to call you on the phone, or you're in your car, or you're having it, or you're riding down one eighty-one, and you have to do those things, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I tell you, if you have a responsibility to the citizens of this county... I tell you, if you have a responsibility to the citizens of this county, if they wanted to make an appointment with you, that you have your office, just like the auditor and the rest of the, like, of these kind of officials and employees in this county.
Yeah, I'm a director today, but he didn't, he didn't want a dedicated secretary.
I kindly ask that the discussion gets placed on the agenda so that it is a discussion, it's not on the agenda for today.
I understand, I agree with you, I understand.
There won't be dedicated space in the restored courthouse for commissioners.
Yeah. Okay, what, I'm losing the order. We're talking about so much other things, I forgot what we're at. I'm losing, I apologize. Okay, got it. If there's a name.
Sorry.
Wait a second, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Item number sixteen, passed.
Item number seventeen, discuss approve, disapprove on Roden Bridge contracts related to two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, TECO County Rule one ninety-nine and County Rule two eleven, and allow county judges to sign contracts. Shelby?
Listen, from the discussion last week, uh, probably enough time for Jeff to get his comments done, Mr. Hancock.
The, uh, contracts have been reviewed by Jeff, uh, he has talked to the construction companies that, uh, have signed the contracts, he has agreed to sign off and recommend to the judge that the contracts be signed as they are, he has negotiated with two of the companies, uh, the two that were concerned and got some concessions that will be added to the contract and no additional cost, and he said it would satisfy the questions that the judge had and the commission had, and he will recommend that all three contracts be signed and you'll send them back, uh, Erica on Tuesday, or the judge is signature here with a letter of recommendation.
No action would take on item number seventeen. Item number eighteen, discuss approve, disapprove on selecting a bank to establish, uh, accounts consistent, uh, with county, auditor, grows up for thousands of the visitor from department depositing money into the county treasurer's office. Shelby?
Yesterday I went to Askosha County and I talked with the auditor over there to blow the treasury, and spent like three, three and a half hours over there, and I want to know the procedure they had for getting their money deposited into the bank. And all this come up over the conversation, I guess, because I had meetings here last week, one day, and there was questions that were asked about, you know, depositing money. Well, I found out one thing, the treasury in Askosha County, Frank Frank doesn't hand any money off, I mean, she, she has the, the accounts, but the money are, and I want to start with the JP's, the JP's in Askosha County deposit money every day, and with the treasury, with the, with the bank. And what they do is, and, and all the others, uh, all the other, uh, offices that need the deposit money, the, they have a, a back bag, and their two deposit slips are put in the bank bag, and, uh, when you go to the bank bag, it's security's locked, deputy sheriff picks it up, picks up the bag, takes it to the bank and puts it into the, what they call a sub-deposit bank, they have one in Live, Texas, and twelve, but everything else is in, uh, in Askosha Prospect Bank there. And when the bank took accounts, the money they called, the bags are picked up, a deposit slip is sent back to the current, the bag is in the bag, the deposit slip is out first, as well as the bank, as the treasurer gets a copy of the, of facts, they fax a copy of the sheet, of the depository sheet to the, to the, uh, treasurer, and then that's already speeded into the, into the, to the account. Uh, she says, she doesn't count any money at all, uh, because they, they deposit with the bank. The other day they had, they had a tap attack over there because the sheriff bought a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for one hundred and fifty dollar bills because they had, they had a sheriff's cell, and she made a lawsuit down, the sheriff counted it out in front, and they took, they put it in the bag and used it in the back as well, but they had one officer that goes around doing that. Uh, she, she says one doing that, that frees up her time to do other issues, she's got three girls working for her, of course they do stuff for the district, the district, uh, as well, but her thing was that, that, you know, and they also have a law that they think when somebody brings in a copy of a, a, a deposit slip, they have a timestamp machine, and they stamp it, and then they sign this log, it, this was brought in this day, you know, so, I guess, and one of the things was that, that last week when we had, y'all had those meetings and discussions on who was going to take the money or why, you know, why we have to do it this way or whatever, and, uh, I was just trying to figure out, if it was kind of recommended and then logged, or if maybe it's supposed to set a procedure to, to how money's supposed to be deposited, I just want to put this thing to bed and to get a, continue a, a steady, uh, plan on how we're going to do stuff, and, uh, so I guess I'm ready to get moving, but go ahead.
Items twenty-one and twenty-two, which I placed on the agenda, also address the situation.
Shelby, we don't have a problem depositing the money at the bank, but we have the deposit to give the treasurer or the county depository. And what I understand is that right now the county depository is gulfing.
But you can create a sub, if you can't, I saw you get it. You have a sub-deposit.
Well, they're just working on that, correct? To make it front county national rights, and that's part of the item eighteen and nineteen too.
Yeah, and all it is, is just a clearing account, they sit there and then the deposit will come and be wired, they wire it up.
And we also, I want to wire it, we're going to write it out again, we'll discuss this in.
I was going to say, you're, you're basically into the same stuff that, uh, is further downstream, I would move a little pad, you know, why don't we just, uh, pass on this and, and keep it down to twenty-one, twenty-two, because it's basically the same thing.
Okay, so you want to discuss this on item number, I want to talk to you, Shelby?
Yeah.
All right.
I got the whole page, didn't you?
Item number nineteen, discussion on update for Orange County jail construction. Shelby?
I put that on here, it's a, it's a, I'll be going and try and get, hopefully we can get a thing, good explanation what's going on. There hasn't been much work going on here.
The, uh, attorney for the county that represents the county sent a letter to the owner of the construction company yesterday with a seven day timeline to get the project in its completed form, uh, with the, uh, objective of going to the bonding company. The project is in the ditch, and when Shelby said there's no work going on, basically nothing is happening down there, other than we have been six months rattling with a construction company, and the owner could not even get out of Houston this week to have a meeting with us. So it's time we get off of the, uh, whatever we're going to get off of, and get on with getting the building completed, so as far as I'm concerned, I recommend, and I think Jeff will recommend, that we go to the bonding company and get somebody else to complete the project. That's basically where we are at this time, uh, we're not having any luck getting this thing done. It looks like they, uh, the weeds have grown up around everything, it looks terrible down there, and we've got ten million dollars in a project and we need to get it finished.
I remember Jeff Chapman recommending that we go ahead and pay that last bill, that he assured us, that he talked to him and that he talked to the owner, the company, and hopefully y'all remember that. Where's Lorraine Daley in this meeting?
Well, I'm just telling you what we did.
Well, I, oh no, I'm, I'm just asking, you know, the, the mall parties, I mean, they're, we're.
I don't know what has happened in the past, you both may be correct, but at this point, we don't have anything else left to do, other than to go to the bonding company, and that has been our effort, to try to stay out of bonding, because it is such a terrible, terrible process to go through, but I don't know that we've got any other choices now.
Well, we actually had withheld payment on, and Mr. Chapman actually stood up there and said that he had spoke personally with the, the owner of the company, and he, he recommended to the court to go ahead and pay the bill, and he, he felt totally assured that the company was going to fulfill the, the project, and I mean, he sat there and gave you that recommendation, you can probably find the meeting in minutes and, and go back and listen to.
I, I don't have any question about that, I, in fact, there's not even an issue there. The promises were there, and we were hoping that those promises were more than promises, and they did not turn out as they were planning, so there's not much else for us to do, we can talk about all this other stuff, we need to get this thing to bond, and we need to start, you know, whatever else has happened in the past, I ain't going to fix that, but that's the fixing stuff.
But they're learning, they're learning stages, I mean, we need to look at what happened and learn from it, because we're about to get sold down the river again.
We are, we are learning, that is, we're going to the bonding company, is that, I don't know how else to put it to you, other than we're through talking about getting it done. That's, that's my recommendation.
Okay, and going to the bonding company requires what?
We have to get into the executive session, y'all have to give us permission to do that. The seven days has been started, there was about a letter that Jeff wrote to the construction company, and the process has been started, we just need to get on with, getting the thing taken care of. Last week, when the guy told us he was having trouble getting out of Houston because it was flooding, told him to get a damn boat, he needs to be down here, he's not coming, it's just, you know, just get over it, you know, that's, you know, where I am.
But again, I think that, uh, the court, the county, and everyone is learning from past mistakes, and with your help, and I say this sincerely, keep reminding us of those things, whether it's the defective Roden Bridge contracts, or whether it's construction contracts, and I realize that we're in debt with some of the same people that might have created these problems, but, you know, we probably need to throw the covers off and, and let everything air, but anyway, I, I do agree with, with Mr. Hall that, you know, we need to look at these things more carefully. I wasn't here when the contract was made, I'm sure it was made with conscience, everything looked good, all of the stuff was in place, unfortunately it didn't work out that way, so as, as Mr. Hancock says now, the last shot is the bonding company, and my experience with bonding companies is, he's exactly right, you, you know, if, if it's going to be like pulling teeth on a mad rattlesnake, you have to have a bond, but we got to do it.
I don't, you know, there's no, there's no good choices left, there are no good choices.
What do you want the executive session?
I'm fine.
Okay, you guys ready to discuss on item number nineteen?
No, he has, that is me to take off.
All right, thank you, sir. Item number forty, discussion on GEO administrative fee in amount of a hundred thousand, Shelby?
And somehow we're even in that time, GEO, she was talking about, you know, immigration, civil detention, custody, where I put the cost, and I asked the one who was daily receiving payments, and to her knowledge, we had not been registered, so I was, I've been trying, I thought, I've been trying to find the contract, and Carol didn't have a copy of the contract, so I had to, I'm not going to be in the judge's office till some of those years I can work for, and I just wanted to, everybody knows that we'll get received money, but I don't know, I'm over it. Why, do you know anything about this? Let me say.
And like in January alone, we got three deposits of two point one million dollars, one was like in the middle of the month, and one was like the, uh, the twenty-ninth or thirtieth of January, and I'm only supposed to keep seven million dollars in the bank, you know, according to our contract because of, uh, collateral, so that sometimes throws me way over my notice, so it takes a few days to get those checks done and signed and try to make deposits and the cash, and so we need to, something needs to happen.
I just want to have a discussion, too.
Well, in this filing issue, those monies, they're direct deposited in for a banking account, but we don't have invoices from GEO that exactly match those deposits, we have to wait for corrective invoices, et cetera, so there can potentially be a weekend day timeline.
I realize this is an action item, this is a discussion, but at some point, if, would it be appropriate to contact them in person and remind them of it, so if it's supposed to be to write them a letter reminding them of it, the.
All of the above?
Yeah, I would say if, if it's an action item, it probably needs to be put back on there, so we can actually act.
Maybe Shelby knows the, the contract, and drawn up and everything, and find out exactly what's going on.
It should be within the contract, which Carol and I were just discussing, at the time the court authorized them to expand their facilitation, and at the time that contract was ratified or accepted, I attempted to address the procedures to recover our monies, and I was quickly shut down by Judge Long, but I was not a member of the court and not involved in discussions.
Well, Mr. Chapman was involved with that contract, but did you say you asked Carol for the contract and you don't have a copy? I did not have a copy. I mean, this is a discussion we have had for years with this court, not being able to find contracts. Every contract that you sign, whether it was Lorraine Daley doing the asphalt, which turned into concrete parking lot back here, nobody can find a contract. Well, you go to Carol's office and she doesn't have a contract, she should, the clerk's office should have copies of every contract that's initiated within the court. It's record keeping.
Does anyone know, um, um, does anyone know what the procedure is when someone files a contract?
Uh, we, I always try to make sure it's filed with, with court, I'm trying to say that.
If I don't get it when the meeting's taking place, I, I do not chase it down, I don't have time to chase it down, it should be brought to my office if it's not that far away.
When, and I would suggest, and this is just a suggestion, at this point, that whomever provides it, Erica, would be required, uh, delegated to see that those things are taken from Judge Long's office or a copy of them, put in the committee record, all of these things should be a matter of public record and not, unfortunately, like some lost stuff piled in court.
David, the biggest offender of not getting them filed is the commission's court. They have a body, I'm not talking about anybody in the court, just as a body, they are the worst offender because they can't seem to get it from whichever chair to that desk during commission's court when they sign the contract, and they get lost before the meeting is over.
Yeah, I was going to, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, I, with the exception of, of the paying bills, I think that's the only thing that I'm aware of that all commissioners can handle, that they sign off on each, most of the time, I think you probably know this better than I do, is the judge signs this stuff, so somehow we, we as a court need to make sure that it makes a transition from his desk to Carol's office, and perhaps that's another item that we need to address and meet sometime, that, that it be taken care of, and I'm not pointing fingers, because obviously this is not something new, this is a long-term.
We got a whole budget that we missed in one year, and maybe it's made, between there and Carol, the budget disappeared.
I understand, and that's what I'm saying, in other words, we, we need to have a, a better chain of authority when things are passed from one to the other, and, and I don't, you know, again, I'm not one for rules, but somehow we have to come up with some procedure or a rule in order to get it, and it's turning into the, you know, kind of record, because it's, it is important, it's, uh, if, if there was a default and we can't find a contract out, you know, I mean, if Chapman happens to have it, that's one thing, but some of this stuff doesn't go past you, and it, it will be important, anyway, that's it.
Thanks, David. And along with the discussion, item number twenty, item number twenty-one, discuss approved, disapproved setting the time to make a deposit for the collecting departments by action of Commissioner's Court of seven, twelve, two thousand and eleven. Set time is not more than fifteen days. Most departments currently deposit weekly. A, the county officer or other person who receives the money shall be called up the money with the county treasurer on before the next regular business day after the date on which the money is received. If this deadline cannot be met, the officer or person must deposit the money without exception on or before the fifth business day after the date of which the money is received. However, in a county with fewer than 50,000 inhabitants, the Commissioner's Court may extend the period during which funds must be deposited with the county treasurer, but the period may not exceed 15 days after the date the funds are received. B, the county treasurer shall deposit the money received under subsection A into county depository or depository section, what is that, one one six, one one three?
One six.
Okay, in all cases, the treasurer shall deposit the money on or before the seventh business day after the date treasurer receives the money. And that's all item number one six.
Okay, under subsection A, the actual statute may not exceed 30 days after the date the funds were received by a fee collecting office. That's the actual statute. And July of two thousand and eleven, Commissioner's Court voted to make that time period 15 days from the date of receipt. It must be deposited with the treasurer. Most fee collecting offices right now are depositing in weekly or 10-day increments. I'm requesting that the court change that to make the deposits on a weekly basis, seven days from the date of receipt of funds. It allows for more timeliness of getting the monies into the county depositories and allows for better investment, allows for security, having those monies in an insured institution.
Most people are doing it now except some are going to 10 days?
Well, most of the time, most offices are submitting money weekly. Uh, there are a few that maybe if they didn't have large collections or they don't have a reason, they have to come in until Wednesday following the Monday they came in. It may be 10 days, but I'm requesting that it be changed to seven days.
Seven days. For anybody to handle money?
Correct.
How many, will it be changed to, to, how many, 10 days, 15?
10 days, 15.
How many, 15 to, to the seventh day they recommended by two thousand and eleven? Everybody have any comment on that?
Does that have to be like a certain day of the week that you want it, or just?
Yeah, it is seven days after the date you receive it. It would be ideal if we could set up specified days so we know.
Like every Monday or something like that? But you're saying that if, I mean, uh, this is a name, it's a, you're saying that as soon as they get it on Monday, it has to be on my next Monday? If they get two more on Wednesday, it has to be on my next Wednesday, like that, and Friday, next Friday? And so they'll be making trips?
Well, no, whatever they collect here in one week, if they bring it all in the next Monday, they've met the requirement for that personnel.
But within seven days, they have seven days. Okay, I, I, some money for Friday, they can do it. It would be probably easier if we just set like for a Monday, right?
No, that would not be easy. No, it would be seven days if you, but if you set a certain day, there may be times that the JP's have court on Monday, and there may be times that we have court on Monday.
That's why I said it wasn't a commoner, guys.
It would be difficult if you set one day.
So that would be like only on Monday they can receive.
So for the offices to have to act everywhere.
But within, but within seven days, you're right?
After received, so that means if you received it on Monday, it has to be on the next Monday. It's not seven business days, it's seven days.
So for example, if they receive something on Monday, they know they're gonna have court on the next Monday, so they have to turn it in on Friday?
Well, unless they turn it down on Monday, if court's only half a day, they still have the other half a day to turn it down, so.
Right. I'm just saying, if you just set one day, you just say everyone has to make their deposits on Mondays, that would be difficult to do. You know, what if something happens on Friday and Monday? If we know we have seven days, we have a week, I'll plan ahead for that. I'll know, hey, um, you know, I'm gonna make a deposit on Monday and Thursday or whatever. But if you just say every Monday, you have to turn in a deposit, I think that's impossible for some reason. I think it's better just to say you have seven days from the day you receive it. It will affect the day that they're bringing it in, so I'm not setting it on one particular day.
Okay, everything's fine like that?
Yes.
JPs, I know y'all do that too, so, y'all just? No, no particular date, right? Just have seven, seven days?
Seven gallons.
Motion's been made, it's like, all papers say, I, I, we approve, non-motion basis. We know exactly. Item number twenty-two, discuss approved, disapproved utilizing Corrington National Bank as a subdepository with an establishment of a fees clearing account to select for all fee collecting departments. See if that's proposed procedures as prepared by county auditor subject to L G C one one two point zero zero one. Requirements of Corrington County National Bank permanent inclusion. One, Falls City National Bank must be made aware of the utilization of Corrington County National Bank. Two, Commissioner's Court approved. Three, Commissioner's Court authorized the signature on account provides resolution of Corrington County National Bank. Four, deposits shall not exceed 250,000 insurance amount, 250,000 insurance amount. Five, county will pay for checks involving those.
As Shelby mentioned earlier, there has been discussion about utilizing a subdepository bank for the fact of trying to get the monies into the bank quicker. Uh, it saves time for the receiving department because as it currently is, when they bring the monies in, they count it, they receive it, they put it in the safe, then when they bring it back out, they have to count it again for the deposit process. So this way, if it goes direct to the bank, it will alleviate that amount of time that's involved. Uh, the requirements from Corrington County National Bank, I talked to Mary Krujak on that. We do have, I have a copy of a letter from Gerald Sekula, the president of Falls City National Bank. I believe Herb has the original, and it states that they have no problem with Corrington County National Bank serving in this capacity. It will be strictly a clearing account. The monies will be deposited there, and once a week, we will move the monies by check. So we have a paper trail to Falls City National Bank. Uh, so what we need now, I've prepared a very simple resolution for the court's signature after they approve utilizing the subdepository that authorizes the signet boards on the account to be the county treasurer and the county auditor currently, Vi and myself are our first assistants, Elaine Simmons or Michelle Selyas, to be the signatures on this account to be able to move the monies. And that is the way all other county accounts are set up, with the signatures of the county treasurer's office and the county auditor's office.
So does the, y'all will be able to move the monies?
Correct.
Who will be able to deposit the money at the subdepository?
All fee collecting offices can deposit at the subdepository.
Anybody that collects money can go straight to?
Correct. Now, we can, it can be any or all, or any and all. My original proposal last Wednesday at the meeting with the fee collecting offices was that it was all JPs, district clerk, county clerk, EMS, special projects, and broken bridge permits. I did not include the waste facility because those collections are nominal. I thought that that would not be a problem for them to continue bringing those into the treasurer's office. And I also did not include the sheriff's department because the sheriff deposits right now on a monthly basis, but with the adoption of the other previous item, they are going to be required to deposit weekly also, so they can either bring it to Vi or to direct to the Corrington County National Bank. Depends on which avenue Vi wants them to do.
Okay, so y'all would, y'all would take it straight to the bank or would like, now I'm just using JPs for an example. Do they go straight, they go to Vi, then somebody counts it out, and then they go over there, or they go?
You should have the procedures that I had written previously, what would happen. The page with four items. Weekly deposits shall be made by each office into a checking account at Corrington County National Bank. Each office will be provided duplicate deposit slips. When preparing the deposit slips, be sure you indicate your office. For instance, if it's JP three, she writes JP three on that deposit slip so we can trace it to her report. At the time of deposit, be sure the amount confirmed by the bank as deposited matches the report. If it does not match, determine the difference and make the applicable corrections before proceeding to step number two. Number two, on the same day as deposit at Corrington County National Bank, each office will bring the duplicate of the deposit slip along with the week's report to the auditor's office for confirmation. The auditor's office will make a copy of the bank deposit slip for our files. Then they proceed to the treasurer's office for the receiving of their monies into the county's financial system. The amount received will include the monies deposited at Corrington County National Bank as well as any credit card transactions for the week. These amounts must match the report amounts reflected on the report. The fee collecting office will provide the treasurer's office with the duplicate of the deposit slip as well as the report for the week. And then the procedures to follow for the treasurer's office would be to establish the checking account and refer to the procedures for the fee collecting offices. And then every Friday, a check shall be written from the account of Corrington County National Bank to the general fund to move the monies deposited during the week to the Falls City National Bank. Every Friday, the monies deposited during the week at Corrington County National Bank shall be deposited at Falls City National Bank. In other words, that check's written, and that check goes to the bank that day. Uh, and the procedures as of last Wednesday, I said the sheriff's department, waste facility, and any other miscellaneous depositors of the monies with the treasurer's department shall continue with the current procedures, which is directing, directly depositing with the treasurer's office.
What time on Fridays is that shut off day? Like if somebody, if you add it up by lunch, if somebody deposits after, after lunch, that goes to the next Friday? I guess I'm getting confused.
Technically, bank business closes at three o'clock. And so then the check, whatever's in that bank at three o'clock, we should write that check for that.
It's gonna be at three o'clock, then that check will be made, and anything beyond that, if somebody deposits after that, it goes back to the next Friday?
The only issue I have with this is that Mr. Hancock can kind of, uh, I was understanding that no money was to be brought to my office. All departments are to deposit into the bank. Correct, Mr. Hancock? So that would mean sheriff's department, EMS, everybody?
Well, everybody's gonna do their own deposits?
What I said, we couldn't pick and choose, it was everybody.
It, if, it would be easier if we do it for everybody, every fee collecting body. We just had some problems last week, and we were, we were trying to fix it based on that. Our recommendation is that all account, all fee, fee collecting agencies go through this account, and I think the commissioner's court can act on that.
So, so nobody has, nobody's gonna go through Vi with any kind of?
Well, they don't have, they don't have to carry the deposits physically to Vi. It'll go to the bank.
To the bank, and then they come to me with the auditor, and then after that, they go with Vi.
Correct. Currently, now when anybody deposits this money, they come to our office first for confirmation of their funds to match with their report, and then they go to the treasurer's office for receipt.
That's followed extension. Judge?
Okay. I, as a justice of the peace, don't question orders that are issued by a county judge. A county judge doesn't question issues ordered by a district judge, and so on, and so on. We are looking at something in the local government code that says a county officer or other person who receives money shall deposit the money with a county treasurer. And then it only says, however, in a county with fewer than 50,000 inhabitants, the Commissioner's Court may extend the period during which the funds may be deposited with the county treasurer, but may extend it 15 days after they're deposited and received. It doesn't say may change where it's deposited. So how can this, this, you know, I take the local government code as the district judge. How can we, as the county judge or the JP, question their authority? These are doubts. That's our issue. We have to go by that.
Who has the control of the account, the one? Who has the control of the account at Corrington County National? Who writes the check? Vi?
Vi will write it with the countersignature of the auditor's department.
You basically have deposited with the treasurer when you put it in the bank?
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's, that's.
That's it.
Because that's a county account. And on a further informational situation is Judge David Peoples has ordered, the order is not writing, but he has ordered verbally that this procedure be followed up until the point in time that an AP's opinion is acquired, to see if there's anything.
So, so Judge Peoples, that, go over what that paper is, what that paper has stated on it, cause, am I asking directly?
Judge Peoples is deciding over the drama between the county auditor and the county treasurer. We are not in that order. We don't want to, just because at a close, the county's doing it a different way, you know, maybe it works for them. We're concerned that this could trouble, cause troubles for us. We are looking at it, it says, and I repeat, a county officer or other person who receives money shall deposit the money with the county treasurer on or before, not the county treasurye, treasurer. That's what I'm concerned.
But Judge Peoples has stated that it needs to go this route for now until we get an AP's opinion?
Correct.
So I was.
Also, it says here, also, receive the county, about a county treasurer, from section one thirteen point zero three. The county treasurer shall receive all money belonging to the county from whatever sources may be delivered to any depository service.
That, that's what I'm saying. Where if you effectively deposited, you have tendered it to the treasurer when you put it in an account that she has control of at the bank. If that account was only controlled by the auditor, that would be a different story. But if the treasurer has, I, I would almost think that it would be sole control, but that's just my borrowed legal opinion on the thing. Herb, if you have a comment on any of this?
I, I basically, what, tried to mold it to fit Judge Peoples' instructions, uh, the bank account to be effective, we just put the auditor's information on it because it's actually controlled by the county treasurer. The money goes into, once that deposit's made, the person who deposits the money has lost control of it. It goes into that account, and the treasurer is effectively, I believe it takes both signatures to get it out. Is that correct?
Is that, is that the situation now, which the office, if money goes to the bank in Falls City, our current depository, and money needs to be taken out, does it require the same two signatures?
Yes.
I don't see an issue with that. I think that's slicing or dicing orders. And the other thing is, this would, I believe, do save us, save the county, excuse me, well, uh, some travel expense, especially here in town, where people would be charging mileage to go to Falls City, saving the JPs, you know, I, I'm not faulting anyone for their travel, but I understand that, that it would be beneficial to have something close here where it's two blocks away. I, I like Falls City, don't misunderstand, but you know, it's 10 miles to Falls City, so we could make 50 cents a mile for somebody to go up there. You know, that becomes a little bit out of focus. The other question that I had was, we're talking about all of these different depositing entities, and it's been noted that they go in the general fund. I assume that's correct. There's no special, none of these things that deposit would have a special designation, they all go in the general fund?
They all go directly into the general fund. Then if they are special purpose collections, they go in from the general fund, they are dispersed out to the appropriate.
And that is stiff, that's how it's being done now also? So that would be no change?
Correct. I do just want to clarify, Caroline, it's not an ongoing issue between the county treasurer and the county auditor. There was a lawsuit filed by the county attorney against the county treasurer, and that's how Judge Peoples got involved.
So really, Herb, no, none of the money, money collecting entities that are collecting money, they, by Judge Peoples' words, cannot go to Vi. They have to go to the subdepository that we're gonna set up?
You know, we're trying to do it this way. If Vi kicks out the traces and said, I don't wanna do it, we'll just have to go back and talk. back and talk to Judge Peoples.
I never said I didn't want to do it. I never said that. When I called Mary Kreshak at Karnes County National Bank, this was a stipulation that she said that they needed, and I was out sick on Tuesday, and Lwana graciously put this on the agenda. Herb and I talked Friday about it, that we needed to get this decided quickly. So basically, they want approval from commissioner's court so I can go and do what I've been ordered to do to open this account. I'm not dragging my feet, I'm not trying not to do this, Herb, so don't try to accuse me of it.
Order by Judge Peoples.
Yes, but Karnes County National Bank has stipulations that they're not, they're not our depository. I had suggested being at our depository, and Mr. Hancock had an issue with me opening it up in our depository, because that was, because being a purpose, I think, was his worst. So I said, well, Karnes County National Bank is what, then I let him go with, because I was given the choice between Falls City or Karnes County National Bank. So when I called them, this is their question, this is what they want commissioner's court to do, this is what Lwana's trying to accomplish, to get those done. After that, any issues with the J P or any others that have to have, I don't know how to handle that. I don't, I don't, I don't know how to handle that. But we're just trying to get these through commissioner's court approved so I can do what I've been ordered.
I think the commissioner's court, it isn't in control of how the money is deposited. In the room, in the decision...
That's your control of how the money is deposited.
And Herb, didn't you, didn't you issue correspondence to each of the questioning offices that they would not be prosecuted for depositing directly rather than depositing physically?
And if they want to, they can, they can seek, they can get a lawyer to do a mandamus and keep it from doing it if they want to. You know, there's a legal process to go through if they decide they don't want to deposit it. You know, and that's the process that we need to follow. The commissioner's court, in my opinion, can make a decision to require them to deposit here. If they decide not to, then we'll go to the courthouse on Monday. That's all we can do.
If they don't want to do it at Karnes County National Bank, go to Falls City National Bank and tell the court.
That's right.
Well, and Judge Peoples also indicated that if there was ever any charges filed by the county attorney or succeeding county attorneys, that he would squash them before the ink was dry. I believe it was his, I think that's...
That's basically what, you know...
But I don't want to do something that is gonna get me in trouble or later on come back and bite me. Because if I'm getting the letter that says, go ahead and do this, even though it's not right, but we're not gonna prosecute you, I'm not doing it.
I understand. That's why I'm trying to, Herb is trying to get, you know...
You know, if they, if they don't do it, we'll just deal with it in the courthouse. That's the only issue. I can't, we can't make anything accomplish in that. Commissioner's court can make a decision to do the deposit this way. If the J Ps don't do it, I'll deal with that if I have to. But that's not some, the commissioner's court can, can make a decision. We're trying to establish a process that works to shorten the time necessary for the treasurer in working her job, doing her job. That's basically what we're trying to do. It is a process that's already been proven. It's a process that's already been used, and one that has been recommended to Judge Peoples, and that's the reason that we're where we are. I don't, you know, I'm of the opinion the commissioner's court can order it. If the J Ps don't do it, then I will address those issues in whatever way I have to do it. I don't want to, but I will if I have to. So that's the, that's the where we are at this point.
Can we, or can we not wait until we have that A G's opinion that we're waiting on before we take action? Is there a problem right now getting the money to the bank? Is it getting there timely?
Judge Peoples indicated to implement this procedure while we wait for the A G's opinion.
And how long is that gonna take? Is that the file?
I think it's probably Ms. Shosse either sent it off or...
The simple resolution that I prepared states, the resolution of Karnes County Commissioner's Court be resolved that with the approval of Falls City National Bank's depository for Karnes County, Karnes County Commissioner's Court authorizes the establishment of a fee clearing account to be opened at Karnes County National Bank. By action of Karnes County Commissioner's Court Friday, May 29th, 2015, it is determined the signatures for the Karnes County's fee clearing account shall be the county treasurer and the county auditor for their designees. As of this date, those individuals would be by Malone County Treasurer, Elaine Simmons, Deputy Treasurer, Lwana S. Casbrick County Auditor, and Michelle Salia's First Assistant County Auditor. Then I listed each member of the court with the space for their vote. Walter Arlong, Jr., County Judge, Shelby Dugnay, County Commissioner, Precinct 1, A T. Pete Gower, Commissioner, Precinct 2, James Rosales, Commissioner, Precinct 3, David Reynolds, Commissioner, Precinct 4, with a spot to allow for the recording of the action vote, and then signature spots for each member of the court to sign off on this resolution itself, and then a place for Carol to attest it as the county clerk.
Is there any fees other than the checkbooks and the deposit books from Karnes County National?
No, that I'm aware of.
Mary told me not to.
They usually have zero charge checking accounts, but I just wanted to make sure...
And they normally pay the checks and give us the deposit slips or one of the other , that they can order books that have, written books for all of them, they're gonna make this type of books.
My opinion, judges and all the other collecting, the money collecting departments, because Judge Peoples ordered this, I believe that we should go ahead and act upon it and wait for the A G's opinion on there. If that's what, this is an order that comes from Judge Peoples. I would agree with that.
I, to me, it looks like a good procedure, but that's, you know, I'm also, as I said at the beginning of the court, so...
I just said, it's a couple higher level things.
Well, and it, to me, it's good business in that aspect of it. And I don't, I fail to see the difference between handing it to a person and handing it to the person's account. I think that's splitting hairs, if you want to get that from me. So I would move that we accept and sign the resolution as submitted.
And file it off with... Okay. Okay. Motion demands, seconded, all papers say aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes. Item number 22.
So do you want to go back to Shelby's item?
Yeah. One second. Okay, ready to go. There you go. Okay. Ballot. Oh, I'm sorry, somebody said go back to...
Well, item 18, we decided to, we need a no action or something on that.
Oh, it's kind of covered, you can wait, it's not that.
Okay. Well, but you have some on these, you need to either no action or...
No action. We're gonna take no action on item number 18. We are left to get it together, item number 21, 22, it took care of.
Thank you.
Item number 23, discuss approved, disapproved county treasurer's reports.
I think everyone except Jane today got a folder from my office on Tuesday with the reports. I also gave a copy of the report to Lwana on Tuesday when my office about was out, set on Tuesday. Yesterday, she came in with some questions on the reconciliation sheet, and Herb and I have been back and forth on answering those questions. I'm assuming we'll want a full court to approve this. Okay. Okay. So if you have a meeting next week, can you do that? Because on the next regular scheduled meeting, I am in San Antonio at my investment office conference, and I won't be here. So if we can put these reports on Friday.
Okay.
And if you might have any questions, I think I spoke to everybody, but Jane's already on the, the reports. So if y'all want to come up to my office and, uh, if you have any questions.
I think we're table.
Okay.
Okay. All of them, ready for table, item number 23, the discussed approved, disapproved county treasurer's report until this coming Friday. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes.
Thank you.
Time for Friday meetings.
I'm sorry, Erica was gonna call Pete to find out if he's in there. What's that, nine? Just make it a nine?
It's actually more, you said it's a long one.
We'll make it nine or eight, or a J, nine? Nine o'clock? Okay, nine o'clock now. Item number 24, pending the base.
Okay, we will turn to page 10. Again, by pointing out some items of interest, there are election expenses being paid in this cycle, $11,824.03. Those are for elections contracted through the county's elections office. We should receive reimbursement for those fees. Further down on that page, you'll notice we're paying $9,855 for juvenile detention. On page 11, the capital outlay expenditures in this cycle, EMS facility, $2,917.02. Courthouse restoration, $7,609.78. Jail facility, $17,673.99. Tyler Technologies, $20,668.05. Those fees are for the implementation of software products in the county clerk's office. There is an expenditure for maintenance tools, $4,594.35. That is for the new lawnmower, and we need it authorized by the court for the courthouse management. Further down on that page is prisoner detention for sheriff's department detainees, $10,265. It's my understanding we will be able to recover those fees through litigation with bail mills. The next to the last entry on that page is for road materials. In this cycle, we're paying $251,687.86. On page 12, the second entry is for contractors and equipment utilized during this cycle for road maintenance, $321,614.58. Heavy equipment repairs, if you revert back to page nine, you will see the itemization of those. We've got $1,117.90 repairing the 1985 Caterpillar main tractor. We've got $5,414.15 repairing the 2010 John Deere boom shredder. We have a nominal expense to the belly dump, $135. And then we have another expenditure to the 2013 belly dump for $2,150.93. Reverting back to page 12, the last several entries are the rural fire expenditures, $313,000 this bill cycle. Total for this cycle, $1,079,857.15.
The mileage reimbursements that the J Ps have, I assume is they're paying themselves for breaking their deposits over?
Or to commit in magistrate?
Capital outlays, data conversion, C C disasters, the last one on this page, for those computer programs, I'm assuming they're all Tyler Technology?
Yes, those are with the county clerk's office, that's what the C C abbreviations.
Why would, why would the emergency medical services require almost $200 of FedEx expenses?
Dennis?
Dennis, that's aggressive.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He wasn't listening.
I, I ask why would your department need almost $200 worth of FedEx expenses?
We send, once a year, we send our cardiac monitors off to have them recalibrated and fixed, and, and I do believe that's what that's for.
Okay, that's fine. I just, it struck me because I hadn't seen it.
Yes, Laura, yes.
On the repair on the belly dump, those things are about as bulletproof a piece of equipment as you can get. One that's two years old, why did we need $2,100 worth of work?
The bins on the bottom have to get replaced, and they have to re-bush them.
I know that this is intended to bring kids in, but my hearing is they bring them in for one thing, but, and then I, this is a personal thing with me, it has nothing to do, but I see that someone trying to see which library brought in the puppet theater. And I'm, I'm nitpicking, at $285, are we really in the business of entertaining children? Question.
It's part of the, someone reading programs where they...
Like saying, what the libraries tell me is you get them for one day, but when the program is there, and then you never see them.
Well, it's been at Blue Street, getting them one day, being occupied and not seeing us out on the streets.
Thank you. And I think the Runney Library got $2,000 in kind of, correct?
The Runney Library did.
The Runney Library, yeah.
And that goes off to this conference?
I, I believe it's for equipment. I have not actually seen the grant to see what they requested in it.
Information technology had quite a bit of expenses. I'm assuming that's spread across the whole, all of departments and things like that.
Yes, it is.
I noticed there are two brand new trucks in the road bridge yard. Have we got a bill on them yet?
Pickups or?
Big trucks.
No.
No, we should get them this next, I can't figure it out.
I'm assuming those are all by board?
Yep, the by board.
Need bring something to where we have some consideration of what other manufacturers have, not just the ones you bought.
Like we explained the last time, by boards is the way we do it. The government turned around, the bidding process, the benefit point, can't get no lower than that.
I understand, but there are several manufacturers that have equipment on by board. It's not only one manufacturer. You can buy probably four manufacturers. Did you look at all of them, or did you take one?
No, you got it.
I understand also that the, did you not buy the shredder, the pre-armed shredder from Robstown Hardware?
Sure did.
They're not on by board. How did you manage that?
They are on by board.
That's not the information I had. There's, there's gonna be some changes to your department...
I'll give you his number, you can talk to him.
Who?
Okay, you can get the salesman for the government entities out there. I'll give it to you, you can talk to him.
Okay.
Mike, when that was purchased, that was purchased through, and I, I want to say John Deere corporate governmental sales, something like that, not Robstown Hardware. That's where you may have picked it up.
Robstown Hardware is just a store. It's a...
Are there, are there purchase orders issued on all of these things?
Yes.
Yes.
We did have a purchase order on that particular.
I have real problems with what's going on in the road bridge. I think they're, it's unscrupulous, if not outright dishonest.
Do you want to eat? Is there any question? We talked about the capital, on the contractors doing all that, the list of...
As far as the grid repairs or whatever, you would have to ask, Mike, your question.
The extra, the extra $2,000, we were, that was, we were going to, pick up?
He's talking about the rest of the construction.
County Road 184 and the road bridge, we had Miska doing those bridge, bridge wiping, and then...
Yes, yes, yes. We wiped that chorus out because we finished real narrow, we're going at 16 feet.
Okay.
And then what they're doing right now is they're cleaning out the drain, because it was four foot, the front and both sides. it was four foot from both sides, even on the downstream side, so we're cleaning that out, we're going to water it.
So that was a separate project from the road biting project?
Yeah.
That was my comparison, it was closer to the fifth of that, that's what I was doing.
Much of the many seconds, pay the bills. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None?
Do you want to ask a question in regards to your road projects?
Thank you, Your Honor.
On, on the 1747 roads, if the public paperwork isn't being filed to the state, you do know that, that our, our grant money is in jeopardy? That if they're not switching the roads around or asking for different exceptions to way they're making these changes, because actually the number three road, I believe, on our 1747 is County Road 182, and there's never been a mention in this court at all about addressing County Road 182. You just need to make sure, you know, somebody is filing the paperwork, you couldn't lose your 7.7 right now.
On 182, they've been doing, I don't know, we're doing, they're doing the study on the train.
You have, you have certain guidelines, I don't know if you all realize, the guidelines of 1747 are pretty stringent. I mean, that you have to, to, to record all of your changes to the state and be accepted by them, that you have to be accepted, or they can just rip your 7.7 million dollars away. So I'm just bringing that to your attention.
Okay, the last one is to adjourn.
Wait.
I am so sorry.
Can we go back to item 11, please?
I am so, so sorry. I always say, anybody in the comments, going back to item number...
Levon. We want a picture. Thank you. This is ready.
Everybody ready?
Yes.
All right, we go, one, two, three. One, two, three. It's better that one. Oh my God, I closed my eyes. There's two of them. Yeah, okay, we'll use that one. Does it send it to you also?
Sure.
All available, I'll get back to you.
... I would love to read his proclamation. How are you looking? Can you call that list? ... For completed and dedicated citizens from multiple communities in Karnes County to form a joint advisory planning committee known as Community of Karnes Alliance, to address a variety of community needs. Whereas the county of Karnes does not maintain a dedicated community development program to identify grass roots community needs, and whereas the University of Texas and San Antonio's Eagle Ford Shell Community Development Program, which we know as EMSCP, was created in partnership with the U.S. Economic Development Administration in order to address such grass roots community needs. And whereas the dedicated citizens of the county of Karnes noted below, have completed a series of four-hour EMSCP workshops designed to develop the trust-building, visionary, and scenario-planning skills necessary to build and maintain an effective volunteer community planning team called the Communities of Karnes Alliance. And whereas Communities of Karnes Alliance have developed its initial strategic action plan to identify several community projects it will attempt to pursue, now therefore, the county of Karnes wishes to recognize charter members of the Communities of Karnes Alliance and proclaim the 29th day of May each year to be Communities of Karnes Alliance Day in honor of the Communities of Karnes Alliance. The county of Karnes congratulates the innovative Communities of Karnes Alliance, we know what the caller says, CKA, and urges the committee to keep commission appraised of its project plans. Thanks, y'all, bringing that up.
Anyway, if this, one, one, I know every year she has to prepare community information for...
Thank you.
For a lot of information, so, you know, y'all might be able to...
Well, we had to have this person, girl, to go out and visit with, with the... Yeah, they can call me, they're out there, they will be fine.
It's been a long time for that one.